Call the meeting to order, start with the pledge.
Hey, welcome everybody to the work session December 1st, 2025. I have Secretary of Treasury Warner.
Scott Harwitz. Where I'm here, Chip Maron, he's absent, and Matt Parsons.
Present.
And Joe McGlocklin.
Here.
All right, nice to see everybody. I see we'll jump right into our agenda. I see Mr. Dynamic Legal here. You have an application for Wilmington Savings Fund Society of 12 Marlin.
Yes, sir.
Just sign in here real quick.
Pass your pictures out.
What's that?
Yeah, if I can look at his pictures while he explains.
So, the previous time we were here, we needed to update the plans and the application. As the project went from just backfilling the existing bulkhead to actually redoing it. If you look at, the only difference is, is if you open that up. The, which I will be, I just spoke to James about.
This is what?
Updated because. It has a couple of walkways which are no longer there, as you can see in the photos.
It's over here.
And the four foot goes straight across. It's all.
Right along the bulkhead.
Right along the bulkhead, right along the top, which is those pictures there.
Buffering.
Clustering in the sand and a little bit of pebbles. Yep, that's it. So that's, as you can see, there's no more walkway there. There was a pre-existing walkway which was taken out. Other than that, I'm going to, I told James I would get him the new one. We are obviously completed. Fees have been paid, and the application has been updated.
It's an ASB, right?
Yes.
It's an ASB.
Okay. That's what it is.
No. The gravel that's currently behind here are material. Is it four inches below the decking? Or is it, it looks like it's almost level with it.
It is a little bit level.
It should be a little bit like we have a four inch, you know.
Yes, well, the picture doesn't show it, so which the new survey will show the actual. They went 10 feet, they went 10 feet back, but they included the walkway.
Okay.
So what I have, what I'm having them do is actually pull the whole thing back so it's 10 feet from the actual decking.
Oh, so you have a four foot buffer and then a ten foot.
Yeah, they could, they calculated 10 feet from the actual bulkhead.
Yeah.
Instead of.
So you're going 10 feet from the end of the.
So you're gonna lose some of the material that's gonna elevation, it's gonna drop. Okay. That's good.
Your buffer's getting bigger.
Yes.
I mean, at this point in time, as an ASB, it's a highly constrained neighborhood.
No, it's, no, it's a good.
I don't know what else you're gonna do now. Better if they apply prior, but.
Yeah, well, I think once, when they started backfilling, they realized instead of stopping and asking, they decided to start rebuilding. And by the time they called me.
The reason, the reason the question I had was the adjoining property, I believe, to the north or east has an elevation change. That's why, that's why the question.
I spoke to them last week about pulling it back.
That's difficult, maybe. The lots are tight, and, and the bulkhead on those canals. You know, the guy south of you has a failure, and then everybody upstream's got a big problem, right?
That's actually what happened, so.
Well, that's, that's the reason when they did the initial dredging, the last initial dredging. They left like a 10-foot buffer around all the bulkhead. Some of the bulkheads have been there since the 50s and 60s, so.
The original permit for this is.
Yeah.
We, we have 40 years old. We have like permit one, right, Joe, for the whole community over there, so. I'm good with it. You good with it?
Yep. I'm good, yeah.
Advance it under the stamp plan.
Absolutely.
Which I will.
That's all you have?
That's all I got for today.
Right.
The other ones aren't complying yet, so not much I can do.
So we'll move.
I'm gonna do chips first, if that's okay.
You're gonna do chips? I gotta, I gotta walk on with that.
You go for the walk on.
Walk on first? All right, so permission to walk on a, a WLNG.
Second.
Seconded by Joe McGlocklin on favor.
Aye.
So now, let's discuss, this is the WLNG that we've been working on. We'll at least get the conversation started. So we asked them to, you know, get some information from their engineer, which they supplied. They've got a severely deteriorating tower, broadcast tower, and then they have to construct a new broadcast tower. And, and, you know, it's important because WLNG, you know, public service has been something really iconic and important to the entire community. And there's gonna be more information coming, I see, as per this letter for the board to look at, coming probably later on in the week from the engineers, so at least we can, you know, take a look at this. It could be in the office, you could see, and then, then we get the additional information from the engineer, I think, then the board can move forward. Because, you know, you could take a look at the pictures, you'll see that this is a necessary replacement that has to happen for this tower because it's severely deteriorating.
Would they need to get a demolition permit from us?
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever they're gonna need from us, but they're gonna need also permission from a lot of different people relative to construction of the new one. But we're waiting for more information coming from their engineer, so today there's really not a lot we can do, but.
Specifically, we need the mean high water placed on there so we can determine where the location of the old tower is, and if it falls in your jurisdiction for removal or, and your new, the new tower proposed, so.
So without having that.
Yeah.
You can't, you know, so we, you know, whatever, we can talk about it now, but we really need that information, but that'll be here later on.
Was there a permit given from our office originally for this tower?
Not that I, not that I'm aware of, but if they're, if it falls, if the, the current tower falls within your jurisdiction, that would be your jurisdiction to allow them to remove it. If the new tower that they're proposing falls within your jurisdiction, then you can allow that as well if you'd like, but that's what we need to determine by the mean high water. So we can't really do anything until we have the mean.
Also be advised, FCC is going to have a lot to say about tower placement and things like that, so.
I don't believe the new tower is proposed to be within your jurisdiction, but without the mean high water, we can't make.
Yeah, because apparently the engineer's revising plans, so without having the engineer's revised plans, what we could do is have this conversation pending additional information.
Well, it only makes common sense with, you know, sea level rising to move it, you know, landward of where it is now. I mean, it's, so.
All right, go to your next one, so we'll leave that one on hold pending more information.
So I have a, one for trustee Maron, FJCTL and LLC, 3281 Neukölln Road. Michael Davis Construction, it's a withdrawal, so I just wanna put, advise the board and the public that this is being withdrawn, and we're not going to look into it anymore.
Okay.
Correct.
You go to yours now.
I do have Barbara, AJRT, 17 Bay Drive, Hampton Bays Interscience.
Might as well do all of yours while you're here.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Sounds like a bargain.
Cause I see that you, you have a few here, right?
Yeah. Now, before we get started. Barbara J. and Robert J. own the two parcels at Two Seater at 17 Bay Drive. They were both submitted at the same time. You have 17 Bay Drive on for discussion. The docks that are proposed are 100-foot docks which meet the pier line. These two property owners have owned these properties for a considerable length of time and have kept boats here. So they asked me to come in front of the Board of Trustees and ask for a dock which we're proposing at the pier line. And what we would like the, the board to consider, and you don't have to do it today, but for both properties, to put a mooring pile at two and a half feet of water. So they could tie off a boat and have a pulley system to pull a boat back and forth to the two proposed docks. And I would rely on Ed for.
Well, there is 135-foot pier line there, first off, which.
We still don't get the two and a half.
No, I know, it's, it's, it's a, that's a unique area there, but the property, I believe, it's two properties to the west. There was a dock that was short with a ladder down, and it's, I mean, it's similar to what they're asking on this property. So, I mean, really, there's a five mile an hour speed limit restriction within like 500 feet of the beach, so you're not gonna have people waterskiing and running into these pilings. And historically, we have given mooring pilings outside of the, you know, the dock for securing vessels, and it's within 135 feet, correct? It's not gonna be greater than that?
No, I think we could put it at 135 feet. I have to get a permit from the DEC, I have to get a permit from the Army Corps.
Yep.
I have to get a permit from the Department of State, but if the Board of Trustees feel that that's something prudent to propose, then that's what we're gonna do. Tie off mooring pile probably would be a 10-inch piling so that it would stay there with a boat. And property owner could use a piling pulley system back and forth.
I mean, I mean, other than just putting a navigational light on there for people to recognize that it's there. Maybe a solar powered light that would be for navigation, basically like an anchor light or whatever would be appro, whatever's appropriate.
An anchor light on top of the piling would be perfect.
Yep.
Maybe some reflective material as well.
You can put a reflective tape around the piling, just, you know, so if you hit it with a light, it would bounce back, so I mean.
These people have kept the boat there before on a mooring with a permit from the trustees. This would be a dock with a mooring pile to hold the boat, keep it off the bay bottom, keep it safe.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, it's, it's something we have done in the past, so, and it works.
We're gonna rescind both of them then.
I just have a couple of things. If you could add non-treated materials to the cover sheet, and if you're using flow-through, I don't believe it's on cover sheet. The other thing is, is the location of the dock out with the extended property line. Looks like it might cross that.
That's, that's my question.
We can, we can look at that, too.
So it's just, it's probably just the angle might need to be adjusted.
I mean, the worst case scenario, you reverse the L, make it go the other direction.
It's fine.
And you have plenty of, you know, room on the other side, on the east side of the dock.
These property owners wanna have a dock where they could tie off a boat to a mooring pile. Any, anything reasonable from the board is acceptable.
Mr. J. has been asking for a dock since my father was on the board.
I was probably here. All right, so all that, all that's fine with me.
Okay. You have other ones, right?
You, you have two, two in mind here. Joe, I, I have two projects. Do you want, you want, you want to hit them together?
They're both sand, well, one's a dune, dune nourishment with the other one that you want.
Both, both are dune restoration. Both of these clients I've worked for for 15 or 20 years. Board of Trustees have previously issued a dune restoration permit. I encourage the guys to do the work. Nobody wants to pay to put sand on the beach. Seems to be something that's a, a little less likely to occur than it used to be. But the long and the short of it is that in October, they got hammered again. Vertical escarpment, took out the, the old snow fence, so we, we reinstalled the old snow fence in the same place where it was. And it's picking up sand. It's doing fine. Before April 1st, these people are gonna have to make a decision on whether to restore the dune or not. And therefore, we've asked the state and coastal erosion people downstairs and the Board of Trustees for permits to restore the dunes here. Same manner as was approved prior.
I'm fine with that. I'm assuming they're not gonna agree to a sand nourishment agreement? They won't go with that? That's typical what we do, right, Joe?
When you're talking about dune restoration, the whole purpose of doing the dune restoration is to replenish the sand.
It is sacrificial.
You're not, you're never gonna change the character of it. It is sacrificial.
Sand and snow fence and plant beach grass, and that's it. Two properties side by side. If the board moves ahead with those.
I'm okay with it. I was okay with it.
Jim, I have one question. Do you have, is, is there separate plans, or is this plan the plan for all two properties?
There's two separate plans because the state made us provide two separate plans. The last time it was approved, which looks like it was 2021, we got eroded. The state made us submit one for Dick Nye. State made us submit a separate plan for David Adelstein, and we're going to pursue those same plans.
Okay, can you send us 330 Fowler Street? Cause it didn't seem like we have the 330 Fowler Street plan.
Well, we, we send them.
Thank you.
I'm sure that you have.
It's the same plan as back in 21, you think?
Yeah. The, the long and the short of it is, this area is west of where, whatever beach nourishment with, projects were done.
Okay.
And because of that, their beaches narrower.
Right.
So when we have little storms like in October, sometimes they get hammered.
Okay.
The dune has moved back far enough, so now they're nervous again. We gotta restore the face of the dune. It's, it's, it's not a dramatic project.
No.
It's a, a simple dune restoration permit and snow fence.
I'm gonna go with it.
We'll resend plans.
Okay, so you have.
You can advance that, all right.
Absolutely.
That's it?
One, one thing for the board, thanks for reviewing our applications over the years. For your project, Chip's not here, but please let him know that we have the dredging projects for Hay Ground Cove and Sam's Creek ready to go.
Okay.
Just got the soundings back, so we're gonna update our plans.
Okay. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate that, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Let's go back to you, Edward. You got First Coastal?
Yes, Nicholas Lapunovo. Six Bay Road, Schenochak Hills, First Coastal.
You gotta pronounce that for us.
Billy Mack, First Coastal, what the property owner's name?
Yes.
Good question. I'll defer on that one.
No deferral. You're, you're representing now. You can't defer.
I'll jumble it, you know.
No deference.
Okay, yeah, well, exactly. Well, Nick and Kristen. So this, we talked, I think we talked about this briefly before.
Yes, we have had a conversation.
Yeah, this is a bulkhead that tropical hardwood piles and they're rotted. It was installed about 15, maybe 10, 15 years ago. So we're just looking to replace the pilings.
Not holding up.
Not holding up. They're, they're rotted pretty badly. And install a dock. And the last time we discussed, you wanted me to give room for vehicles south of the bulkhead.
Yep.
12 feet is what we proposed.
Consistent with what we have in the past, so.
Exactly. So on another note, on this site, the DEC wanted us to confirm that there was no eelgrass. We actually went out there with waders and underwater cameras and confirmed there is no eelgrass in the area.
Not at this length. If you go out another 100 feet, there's eelgrass.
Right.
All right.
Eelgrass grows.
Yep.
Good. So that, I think you have everything on?
I'd like to move it ahead if everybody's good with it.
Stamp plans for this one.
And we're gonna legalize the steps that are previously.
Exactly. Yes, that's part of it.
Yep, okay.
Bringing that up.
You have another one.
I do, me.
Yeah, because they'll never die.
This is, yeah, our favorite project over at 498 Waters Edge. This was the bulkhead that was built without the benefit of a trustee's permit.
Back in the 60s?
Yeah, back, back in the 60s, predated the DEC. So the property owner's been talking directly with Marty Shay to come up with a solution that he'd be satisfied with. What was suggested is this wall cribbing, and we honestly have not done one of these, but we are willing to experiment with it because it seems like the, it, it's similar to a low sill bulkhead. It's just made out of concrete timbers as opposed to PVC vinyl. So here's a cross-section of the, I don't know if you guys got a chance to actually look at it.
Tell us about it.
Yeah, so it's a, a, a live timber wall is what they call it. Yeah. Spex right there, so generally it's stacked six by six timbers typically are what they made out of, what you would use treated wood timbers. Obviously, that's not an ideal situation here, so we swapped those with concrete timbers. They're six by six. I think they're each 10 feet are the dimensions on the plan, but they're stacked like cribbing. Then you fill that with earth and wetland vegetation, and it's kind of a two-tiered structure. So the lower section will get immersed wetland vegetation, and the second section will get quasi-immersed. And then up top will be the upland buffer area, native vegetation.
Examples of, that you could provide us?
I have a data sheet from the state. They are suggesting this is one of the solutions. I, I don't know of one that's built in the area.
Do we know any permits?
We've never done anything like this.
You have not.
That I'm aware of.
The only cement bulkhead that I remember doing was in the Swordfish Club in West Hampton Beach.
And that's not even.
That was an actual bulkhead sheathing, yeah.
Yeah, this is kind of a stepped, the, the, the structure's made out of cement beams, but it's, think of it as cribbing. So it allows for vegetation to grow.
It's like tiering, growing crops on the side of a mound.
Yeah, pretty much. Yep.
How would the cement hold up in the environment here, being it's freezing and thawing and saltwater? Cause I know I look at the cement bulkhead that's in the Schenochak Canal, and it was placed, and it's literally just falling apart from the freezing.
Well, there is no, there is no weight action back there, really, so that's a good thing. There is freezing, though, that would be.
Would be, yeah, I, I mean, I have my own opinion on this. This is what was proposed with Marty talking to.
Do I dare ask?
I think, I love the idea of the low sill bulkhead. I think it solves all the problems.
It does, and it doesn't put as much structure, and cement is made up of chemicals, so.
Yeah, I mean, I might do the same with this project you did with the pronunciation.
Defer, okay, great.
Well, I mean, it, it, you know, we talked about, you know, these biologs and stuff like that, which is, it was a temporary solution. Is this a temporary solution where over time that the, you know, the cement is gonna break apart and it's gonna establish a natural wetland? So it doesn't roll, slough down into the, you know, the creek?
Answer your question about the cement, it's, it'll be a hydraulic compatible cement, so it's meant to stay in saltwater for quite some time.
Similar, similar to what they do with the artificial reefs down in Florida?
Exactly. So it's meant for immersion, and the way it's stacked, it should be stable. Well, it will have filter fabric. It'll act like a revetment in some sense, but lots of openings to allow vegetation to grow. I'm not completely opposed to the idea. I think a low sill bulkhead is a simpler solution and gets you the same value.
Was the state not with the low sill bulkhead?
It is, comes from downstairs.
So it's not the state?
No.
It's downstairs.
So.
They'd have probably liked this low sill, and they may like this. It's in their brochure.
Because originally it was a low sill you proposed years ago.
And we have no experience.
I don't know if it was low sill. I think it was a regular traditional, I don't, actually, I don't know the answer to that.
I do remember it was originally low sill.
Could it, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think you proposed low sill. I think you proposed.
We, we tossed that idea. We originally said.
It was an idea.
No, there was a low sill and it was a retaining wall.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Back when Fred.
That's what we had proposed. Marty did not like that idea as much as he likes this idea.
We were there when you first got on the board. We went down there.
We did.
Right?
Yes.
So it's no longer gonna be a sheer vertical structure. It's gonna be tiered.
Tiered, exactly.
I do like that idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish people would do that more often in areas of, you know, swell or exposure.
You know, similar, again, this low sill gets you that tiering. It's a little more simple structure and something we're, we're more, I would say, more traditional here. This, again, I haven't used it, but I'm willing to try it. I don't know the property owner's willing to try it at.
Have you had good success with low sill?
Yes, lots of success with the low sill. I like that because we get, it's Spartina grass growing above the bulkhead. We all love that. So till, low sill bulkheads get immersed every high tide, so two times a day.
The town's talking about doing a lot of low sill bulkheads to at certain projects, I believe. Are they using that over at Bel Air Cove Low Sill?
Yes.
Yep.
Are they gonna do low sill at that project is what I thought the discussion was, not this type of.
I'm.
My knowledge, anyway. I'm trying to make sense of low sill downstairs.
Good question. I don't know.
Billy, are you aware of any other places that have tried this proposal?
No, not out here. I've seen photos of, of similar structures, but I have not seen it.
And any reports from out of state?
Yeah, not, I mean, exactly.
It looks like you're completely skipping over the Spartina and basically going for an upland.
Well, it will have the Spartina.
On the lower tier, right?
Exactly right.
That's the theory, right?
Yeah. It'll hold those cells that will allow the aquatic vegetation to survive.
How is the, the concrete boards, are they gonna be fastened to each other or the?
Exactly. They'll be pinned, be pinned to each other with galvanized, essentially bolts.
Right. Interesting.
Is there like examples of it or something?
Well, yeah.
Right?
If you could send the specs from the state.
Probably.
Stainless steel pins.
Yeah, we can go stainless.
If you want longevity, if it's a project that the board's gonna move forward with, you wanna have some longevity, at least 10 years out of it to stabilize that bank.
Yeah.
Which that, once the brute system and everything grows in there, it'll be fine.
They're using galvanized on all, all the rest of the other projects.
Yeah, we use galvanized. It's, you know, anything underwater, it seems to hold up for multiple, you know, decades, so.
If the property is willing to be fine. I, I say go for it, but.
This is what I was gonna suggest you guys do. Have a conversation with the Conservation Department. I know nobody's, you know, jumping at that right now, but see, they, it was their kind of suggestion. I know you would have, almost have to defer, or not necessarily defer, but you'd get a letter of, you know, opinion from them.
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you.
I have to go step out for a second. Is this commercially prepared? Could you give us some?
The, the concrete members are, yes, those are available, and they're, they're like a.
Any, any product data that you could for the board might be helpful, too.
Sure, I can get you more detail on that.
That'd be good.
I'd like to know some more about the, is it saltwater safe concrete?
Theoretically, yes.
Do you know anything about what makes it safe?
Uh, no, I, I think it's just not prone to corrode with saltwater.
Is there a rebar inside of the?
There is.
There is, yeah.
Must be.
This is interesting.
Yeah, otherwise it would just fall apart.
Yeah, it's epoxy coated rebar. So that's, you guys know what I know on that.
Interesting experiment.
Yeah.
If it works.
If you can get some literature or pictures of other states where they've done it.
Sure.
Just, you know, to get some kind of idea what we're actually gonna, I mean, visually, I guess, once it's all grown in, it'll, it'll look like a, just a regular shoreline. But initially, it's gonna look like a cement wall.
It could look like Jersey barriers in the Hamptons.
There you go.
First coastal Jersey barrier.
Supply a flagman at low tide.
Well, you do know what it looks like, you do know what it looks like alongside the LIE for a sound barrier, right?
That's what I thought, too.
So.
Uh, yeah.
I imagine it would get, you know, stained pretty quickly by the water and stuff start growing on it.
The idea is that the vegetation's gonna thrive, and you're not gonna know the structures under there, so I, I get the intent.
If there are actual cells where they, like, where they, the rib muscles can grow. If there are actual cells where they, like, where they, the rib mussels can grow, oysters can set, and, you know, it's gonna grow in, you know, natural stuff like that, that'd be a good project.
But you don't have, like, like trustee McLaughlin pointed out, you don't have big wave fetch in that area. So the reality is, is that, you know, perhaps if you did the low sill bulkhead as you traditionally have done, you'd get the similar benefit with the wetlands, and you'd probably have a lot less invasive situation going on there, and you've got a tremendous track record of success with that, so...
Well, and also, you gotta weigh the cost basis of this project versus a low sill bulkhead, too. I mean, it looks like there's a lot more disturbance, a lot more, you know, engineering of this, so it's probably gonna be a little bit more expensive, so...
Wider footprint than a low sill.
100%.
So you're gonna have more disturbance of the wetland that's existing there now with this project versus to your initial...
I mean, there's a bulkhead there now, so...
Yeah.
The wetland's pretty limited, but yeah.
You could, you know, I mean, even if you cut that bulkhead down, you know, and cut that bulkhead down to its low sill, look, you know, we don't wanna go too into the weeds per se about, you know, removing bulkheads and what happens, you know, sometimes when that occurs, whether it's beneficial or not beneficial, we've seen both aspects, so...
This does have a, you know, in a quasi bluff situation, so the elevation on the landward side is significant, not significant, a couple of feet.
How does this tie into the neighbors?
So there's no bulkheads on either side.
Okay.
It's the only one.
It's all natural.
And just such, I don't know if you've been on site, but the roadway's up here, and then the driveway goes down on a very steep slope. So if you get an extreme rain of about like three or four inches rain event, it's like a river running down there.
Yeah.
So you gotta take that into consideration, too, what's beyond...
The idea is to maintain all the soils landward, so it doesn't get into the...
Effects on the adjoining property owners.
Exactly.
Very important to take into consideration on a project like this.
All right, I'll get you guys more information and, for examples, to show you guys, and we'll go from there.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Billy.
We've got Taplow, right?
Yep.
You've got one more with Taplow.
Sandy Beach 18 LLC. Is anybody here representing?
They couldn't make it, they're stuck in traffic or something.
All right, well, we'll hold...
But they, what did we have? We needed the, so you were sent the covenants for, the only question was the deck?
Yes.
That they're proposing, the 100-foot, square foot deck that's at the top of the stairs?
Yep.
And we, you guys had questions whether you had jurisdiction of it, and I believe you reviewed it, Joe, about the covenants and...
Not for that, I thought I had a sand agreement on that one.
That was a...
Did I? Okay.
So it's good to move that.
I'm in this blur when you get to be my age sometimes.
Yes, we need the sand agreement.
I had no issues with this one.
All right. And that's the case, we'll, we'll get the sand agreement, you know, signed and everything, and we'll put it on for the next work session. Or should we just put it on for...
I think we can advance it.
We could advance it with the...
They have stamp plans, so...
Okay. Well, then, let's advance it with receipt of the sand, signed sand agreement, and then we'll, you know, put it on for the final iteration, all right?
Okay, sounds good. So that pretty much takes care of the top portion, right?
Yep.
All right, let's go over to the general permit applications for determination. I've got 19 Old Point Road. Do we have what we need on that one, James? Costello?
Oh, you had one more walk-on at...
I, oh, you have one more walk-on?
61 Inlet.
I don't, you have another one?
Yeah, this one here buried in the pile.
Oh, I was gonna say, I did my walk-on.
All right, yeah, we went around and around with this one, too. Um, 61 Inlet Road.
Is that you, you represented this one?
Yes, council applicant.
Yeah. Okay, come on up and state your name and sign in, and I was wondering what you were doing there. That's why I was kinda looking.
Just here as an observer, right? Good morning, everyone. John Borkwin, Greenberg Trowerig, Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton for applicant Liberto Legacy Trust. So I know, as you've said, you've seen this application at least once before. I have a new iteration, which was just put in for the Thanksgiving holiday to Mrs. Dickinson in your office. Squire's Holden survey last dated November 25th depicting a compliant six-by-20 float portion of the dock running east-west and a compliant five-by-13 P W C float on the west portion of that dock. As the survey depicts, it is at over 10 feet from the lot line as extended.
That's a separate application.
That's a, the Chetski float is a separate application.
Correct, which is, actually, it was returned to me, the application packet, but I was directed to submit that once the general permit came out.
After this one.
Yep.
So the only request is to just have the survey reflect that it's not a floating dock? It just reflected as a P W C float?
Yes.
Because that would be the separate application.
You wanted to delineate...
He removed the language for the P W C float from the cover sheet.
Yes.
So that, you know, he was aware that it's a separate application.
Yeah.
Makes it cleaner.
Yeah.
So he just has to specify that that's a P W C float, the second float. That's it. Everything else is good on our end.
And the pilings and everything that was, were originally there, they're in the right places now?
Oh, that's actually an important point. Thank you for bringing that up. So there are now, this proposes three pilings, all on the south side of the float and P W C assembly.
Okay.
The initial approval for this application had two pilings on either side of the float, so this kind of has the effect of just moving them to the south a few feet.
Yeah, getting them out of the channel, right?
And his new permit will reflect the three pilings, which is...
Good.
Original permit will, did not reflect.
So now you've got a properly compliant with the Blue Book regulations.
Correct, yes.
So then we could advance it.
Yep.
Pending that stamp plan that has the...
Pending your stamp plans.
The P W C float language on it.
Yeah. And with the stamp plans, you wanna delineate that the P W C float is a separate application and delineate it as a P W C float.
Absolutely. So I'll have this survey revised to show P W C float and dock float.
Yep.
And we can advance it. Is there any way that we could approve the standard permit for this work conditioned upon that while I also resubmit the P W C float application?
Yeah, just go through the standard protocol that we do here.
Let's handle it in the increments that the board has...
Yeah, the standard protocol, we'll just take the standard protocol.
Okay.
That's the best thing to do.
We can't issue your P W C float until this float is approved, so regardless of that, once they approve this...
Just follow the same protocol that we follow, and it's all compliant to the Blue Book is the best way that you can handle this. Just let us, let the office take its general course of business here and...
Get the, get the standard catwalk dock float approved and then apply for the P W C float, and that will be approved also because it meets the guideline.
You could apply for the, you could bring, put the application back in for the P W C float, we just can't approve it until we have a permitted structure that's gonna attach to it.
Understood, understood.
Let this run its normal.
But there's no way that this could just, the float itself could be approved, is conditioned on getting those two...
You'll get the documents amended that need to be amended, so the board has a complete and proper file in front of it. This isn't the planning board, it's not gonna take six months or six years.
Yeah, no, just let it, let the board follow its normal protocol is really what you should do now, because there's no way, it's really what you should do.
You're advancing it pending the stamp plan.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Once we do that review and we have everything we need, then we'll go to the approval of the dock, and then you put the P W C application...
Just show this route.
Okay, so just for clarity, I will get in the amendments to this map, and I can also simultaneously resubmit the P W C application.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, understood.
Of course, you'll be fine.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, so then, there's no more walk-ons. Right? You good? All right, so now we can move to the next section.
This is the first time in years that I've even seen us take a walk-on for something like this. We get two in one. Unusual.
Thank you. Well, W L N G is not usual.
I agree. I agree with that. 19 Old Point?
Yeah, 19 Old Point. Costello, we just needed to...
Yep, stamp plan.
Stamp plan review. I see it. I see it.
Yep, all good. They did everything they needed to.
And the next one you got is 16 T P.
Bingo.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, can advance that?
Good?
Yep.
Good. And the last is 21 Shrubland. Good. Yeah, I see it, it's good. Okay, I see Shakira is here. Why is Shakira?
Good. Word of Val.
All right, tis the season.
Yes.